This work session of the Forest Grove City Council. The topic is goal and objective, goals and objective refinement. Present are all city councilors. City staff is in the audience. There will be no public comments taken and the council will take no formal action. So I'm going to pass it over to Ashley at this point. Ashley, are you good getting us started? We cannot hear you right now, I don't. One minute, please. Okay, do you want to try again? Nope. We still cannot hear you. So I think it's on our end, just one minute.
Could you talk again, Ashley?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, good. Excellent. Well, I think Jesse, if you wanted to offer any opening remarks or any comments to the council before we begin.
Sure, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So this is our work session to kind of seek more clarity on some of the goals and objectives. We always have an annual retreat and then after the annual retreat, we put together as best we can what we heard during the retreat. And this is an opportunity to refine the goals and objectives that are before you today. So I think Ashley is going to kind of take us through each of these. It's a time to ask questions. It's a time to clarify, to add, to refine, to take off, combine, whatever you would like to do. Following this process, the council rules do stipulate that we have to approve the goals and objectives by March. The purpose of approving the goals and objectives is so that staff can populate a budget. Council's certainly welcome to approve it before then. It gives staff a little bit more time, but the council rules do say by March. So with that, I'll turn it back to you, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Ashley, do you want to take it over at this point?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, council. Thanks so much for having us back. We had a great retreat with you all to review your goals. And as City Manager Jesse Ivanderzand mentioned, we've been working to refine the language. And so that's what we'll be presenting with you tonight. There were also a number of new proposals for new items that came up in the goal-setting retreat. So we'll go over those as well. And just to clarify intentions around whether how a new item gets added officially to the list. That would be through either a majority or consensus, consensus or majority on the council. So those items I'll note as we go through the list. And so what I'm going to do, I'll share my screen and it'll show the Excel spreadsheet that lists all the four goals with their listed outcomes and then the objectives listed on the side. And so that's how we'll move through it. So we truly be a work session. We'll be working through this document together, kind of item by item. But before I begin, does anyone have any questions about the process that's been outlined?
I'm seeing no questions.
Okay, well, any come up throughout, don't hesitate to stop me. All right, I'm going to share my screen. I tried to make it big enough. So let me know, first of all, if everyone can read the font.
No, we cannot read it at all.
No, okay, let's make it bigger.
Keep going, please.
All right, we're really far off.
Yeah, that looked.
Okay, let me.
I think we're good now, Ashley, thank you.
Okay, let me see, let me see if I can get the window a little bit bigger. You're challenging the width of my monitor here. Okay. All right, so let's start with the first goal on the list, which is address long-term growth and support housing and economic stability. The outcomes for this goal would be proactive and strategic planning that meets community needs, robust business community and environmentally sustainable policies and programs. So just to orient you to what I was speaking to earlier about which items are new. Anything that's highlighted in green came up as a proposal for a new item. So like I've noted over here, it needs consensus to move forward. And then these are all of the refinements that were made through the retreat process. So we'll just go through one by one. And if there's any questions or comments, we can work through those. So the first one is to initiate policy discussions on an urban reserve growth strategy. This is a continuation of the goal from the previous year and then we refined it to this language. Is there, are there any questions about this goal or this objective or any clarity needed?
No, I don't see any. Wait, actually, yes, one minute, please.
If there's a theme to my comments, it's the clarity. When we say it, initiate, what's the probable product, work product?
So from what I understood, initiating a policy discussion would really be probably having a work session or a series of work sessions to try and define what the scope would be of a potential urban reserve growth plan and then initiating eventually an urban reserve plan. There's a lot of different elements to an urban reserve growth strategy right now, especially vis-à-vis metro, vis-à-vis some other communities that are putting in urban reserves within the urban growth boundary. So the policy discussion, I think, would be to get educated, have some awareness, and then try to figure out kind of a general policy direction before we go down a formal path of developing an urban reserve growth plan, if that makes sense. So I would envision probably wanting to do a series of work sessions with the council to really kind of unpack all of that. There's a fair amount there.
Primarily education. And I'm thinking that this is by June of 2026.
Yes, this would likely occur by June. It might spill a little bit over in terms of, you know, getting the scope refined. But generally speaking, I think we could try and accomplish it within the next three to six months. Yeah.
Are there other questions or comments for this one or are we good to move forward? No, you guys are sharing a microphone, so it's a little challenging.
I think we're good to move forward, yes, sorry about that.
Okay. That's all right. All right, the second one here is to update the Economic Opportunities Analysis and the Economic Development Strategic Plan. Previously, these were posted in two separate objectives, but the council refined them to combine them as they're connected and the Economic Development Strategic Plan is flowing from the Economic Opportunities Analysis, which is going to be completed later this year.
Questions on this one? Counselor Schimmel?
Same theme. I noticed when jumping ahead to the third one, you used descriptors like adopt, implement. So just looking for the context of update. Circulating a graph.
And we have to hold it though.
I think this is implying that it would be update and adopt. So council would like to change it to update and adopt, we could easily. But it's for both.
Yeah, and the context of the clarity is that as we're going through the year, looking at these, something comes up that prevent us from accomplishing what we actually intended versus trying to get clarity on ambiguous language. So if it's adopt, the main descriptor of what we want to accomplish, I'd recommend we capture that.
The adopt, though, is on, it says three years, so adopt and implement?
I think we're on, yeah, we're on number two. Would you like to, would you need to adopt the Economic Opportunities Analysis also? Because I could add language here, update and adopt, both of them. I'm just not sure what the process is.
I think what Counselor Martinez was asking is from staff, is it doable to have it adopted in air? Is there consensus to add adopt to goal two? What do you mean? Because it's already on number two.
Well, it had, so I updated it after Counselor Schimmel's comment for, excuse me, for additional clarity. And so I added the adopt. But previously, it just said update the Economic Opportunities Analysis and the Economic Development Strategic Plan. But then there was a comment that we, you know, if there was consensus on the council, we could change it to update and adopt. So I was changing it there to check and see if we had consensus to show everyone where the adopt word would land in the sentence.
Yeah, we have consensus here, Ashley. Thank you.
Okay, all right, great. All right, what about, so now we've got number three, update, adopt and implement the comprehensive plan. Does that one have enough clarity or do, is there? Yeah, go ahead, Mayor.
Any questions?
On the implement portion, I wonder if we might actually want to refine this a little bit more and say, begin implementation of comprehensive plan? Because it seems to me like it might, it wouldn't be possible to do a full implementation of everything that comes out of a new, fully revised plan.
Is there consensus from the council to add begin implementing the comprehensive plan? The word begin, I'm seeing three head nods. Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, there's consensus to add that.
Okay, implementation. Wonderful. All right, so now we've moved on to the two proposals for new items to be added. And so the first is to host a workshop on ADU development? Is there consensus to add this to the list or any questions for clarity or additional context that you'd like to add?
So Counselor Schimmel has some comments and then I have some.
I support the item, a couple of clarities. One is if staff would prefer to focus strictly on ADU versus alternative housing options. And then, and the second question, whether that workshop would produce a toolkit that you could host.
We didn't know, I think this still needs to be refined. So whatever the council would like on this, one of the thoughts on just doing a workshop is that might be something that CCE could host and then staff could just help inform. So I think that raises a question whether you want it to be an objective of the council or if it just gets assigned to CCE, which the council can do. If it's not holding a workshop, then what does it look like? Is it, you know?
Just two things, this could be just a brainstorming session. But then also, do we want to, before we approve adding things as we're going through this, do we want to go through the whole thing? Because what if we get to a point where we want to add everything and we don't have room to add everything and get them all done? Just a comment, I'm not sure how many we added.
Would you, that's a good point. We can go through all of the existing objectives with refinement and then come back. But, or I can show you if you want some, just some context for how much green is on the sheet. Let me just.
That's a question. So when you, Counselor Schimmel, when you mentioned a toolkit, one of the things that we have done is we have reduced the fees for ADU development. I think there was some discussion about the toolkit meaning like there would be a standard potentially design that somebody could look at and implement. And I know that other municipalities have those. Those can vary depending on the size of your lot, size of your house, et cetera. I mean, we can publish certainly some of those. I think that's just something we can probably find and go do and put it on the website. If that's what you're looking for, I think that's something we can just update the website to do.
Toolkit, yeah, definitely including whatever half dozen approved plans plus how to step by step through the planning with the.
So is there a direction from council that it should be an objective? Or is it something that staff has direction on and can update the website and provide resources?
I think we're still discussing this one.
Yeah, I would just say that there's, I'm clarifying objective, not that we can adopt it like.
Yeah. I have a comment about clarification, though, too, because I thought this item also involved the idea of coming to, actually having a set of pre-approved plans and a streamlined process for someone to go into the building department and get approval for something like that. So that, to me, does seem like a city council objective that would need to be added because it would involve work sessions and then actually updating code.
So would it be more, I guess, how does approve and publish ADU development standards or an ADU toolkit or something like that? Would that be more accurate? Okay. How about staff takes that back? I think we can, we can get that down, we can figure that out, so.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
So just very quickly, if there could possibly be a timeline for that, like.
Okay.
I just want to double check, is there consensus to add this to the list? Can I see a thumbs up, three nods, four, five? Okay, there's consensus to add this one, Ashley, thank you.
Okay, great. All right, and then this next one, and that needs consensus to be added, is clarify strategic direction for downtown redevelopment and partnerships?
Do you want to talk about something?
So during the retreat, there was a lot of discussion about Main Street program, about downtown projects, about partnerships, about the city's roles and responsibilities in those particular programs, partnerships and projects. And so I think we were trying to figure out something that kind of could cover all of that, so to speak, and figure out kind of, you know, have a discussion with the council about where does the city fit and what is our role and responsibility, not only vis-à-vis the Main Street program, but vis-à-vis downtown development, vis-à-vis, you know, after the glow-up project, like who's responsible for maintaining what, those types of issues. So I think it was just kind of a way to try and capture all of that.
And the only other thing that I would add is that with the development of the Forest Grove Forward Community Vision, a lot of that, those themes and potential like implementation and ideas are going to be folded into that vision. And so it allows you a little more flexibility to develop that strategic direction in alignment with the information that's coming through from the community vision process.
Can I ask a clarifying question with that, Ashley? Does that, so in terms of, and I think Ashley and Jesse, but in terms of workload and timeline, are you then suggesting that even if this doesn't get on as an objective, that it will be addressed in the long-term strategic plan? And because one of the things I think, you know, Counselor Gustafson brought this up to you, is being aware that we do have limited staffing resources. And so to have like expectations of being able to get things done. And so the comprehensive plan, I mean, I'm kind of looking for one to two-year goals and then the long Forest Grove Forward, that strategic plan will then come next and drive our goals, objectives, our budgeting, all those things. I don't know if, I mean, I just want to point that out or.
Yeah, it's, so go ahead, there's a comment.
Counselor Schimmel?
I'd absolutely support objective. I get the sense. Great. Main Street program, particularly with the city's role to add with the programs that he does, that all wrapped together. It could be good work session.
Other comments, discussion? Okay, so then I'm going to ask for, is there consensus to put it on? Three, one, two, three, four, five, six. Okay, so there's consensus to add it.
Okay, we'll add that one. All right, and then just in thinking about our process and looking at our time, too, I think what I'm going to propose for this next goal area, which is the ensure an inclusive, accessible and sustainable community. Let's look at all of the ones in white together and let me know if there's any clarity that's needed on any of those. So let's just, I'll review them all together. So the adopted 2040 vision and action plan, that's ongoing work. Then there are eight, hold a work session to discuss DEI policies and programs and evaluate funding options and implement the urban renewal plan. Any questions about any of those three before we move on to the proposals for new items?
So do we have, do we have a draft 2040 vision and action plan?
Not yet, that's being developed through the community visioning process. We have the beginnings of that, of the vision and the action plan. But with the project schedule, it's scheduled to be adopted or brought to council and to be adopted in the summer, in July of 2025.
Wanted to make sure there was enough time. All right, thanks. Any other, sorry, same thing, any other questions about the refined goals? Okay, I think we can move on to the new.
All right, let's, we'll go through these one by one. So we've got inventory, all unfunded mandates, develop a community academy, evaluate city council accessibility and compensation options, evaluate staff capacity and administration and parks maintenance, and then create a parking management plan and conduct an efficiency study. And so these in this goal are the outcomes are centered around community growth and enhancement that considers the needs of diverse, of the diverse community. So this first one, inventory, all unfunded mandates, well, I guess I'll just say it this way. Are there any questions about any of these? Maybe starting at the top and then we'll work our way down.
Any, yeah, Counselor Falconer?
I'm hoping that who, the person who suggested inventory, all unfunded mandates could maybe give.
I think our group brought that up, but after thinking about it and processing it, I think the League of Oregon Cities is doing some of that work and we can do that. So I don't think that that, I would, you know, propose taking that off the list. But it really is a huge thing. The school district has a lot of unfunded, we, there's a lot of things. And so like coming up with a collective voice and that with our legislative body is important. But I don't think we need, I think that can be found through other avenues. There's, the state legislature passes lots of House bills that we have to follow that are unfunded, that cost us money. So just knowing like how much. I think, I think.
And again, it could be a goal or it could be something that staff puts together and presents either in a packet or in a work session or just in resources. But it's just, it's at the point of like, does it rise to the level of needing to be a council goal or at the objective level?
I'm proposing that we take it off, but.
I'm good with taking it off. The only additional context that came to mind was executive federal order, what the implications are of access.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so we can.
Yeah, it's rolling out really fast, so it's hard to.
Okay, well, we'll remove that one. What about, so the next one is this develop community academy?
Yeah, I would really like, so that came out of our group as well. So other communities call it a citizens academy. I like community academy. It's just a way, it's like, we have a lot of vacancies with our boards and commissions. We have a lot of people like upset with the city about different things. Sometimes the school district and like, why are you built, like, why aren't you building more schools? You're building, anyways, a community academy allows people to participate in their local government, get to know us, understand how it works, and then hopefully become involved in the process, right? Want to volunteer on a board or commission, want to run for city council. And so I think there's a huge value in it. So I would really like it to stay. But I don't know if there's any questions or consensus for that.
Yeah, any question, yeah, questions or consensus?
Okay, Jesse?
Thank you. In some of those other municipalities, Mayor, was it that we had to like register for a class and it was like 50 people kind of thing? And then was it over, I'm guessing probably five sessions, five to eight sessions or something? I just want to kind of get a scope of it so we know potentially what to plan for. So, okay, that's all I had, thanks.
So with the develop a community academy, who would be putting on or managing the academy? And if some of it is about, you know, information, I don't, I think we need to improve our communication skills. So I think that would really help with that piece of it. But my concern is putting another workload on people that don't have the bandwidth.
Hey, well, that was a great idea.
Okay, go ahead.
Just being the laser on first CCE, I would hope they could help absorb some of the burden developing.
I would agree. I think CCE works with, and I think, you know, I've spoken with our communication manager and who also sees the value in it as well. So it really would, I think, actually help with our bandwidth within the city and communication and engagement. Is there consensus to add this? Very cool, I see consensus. Thank you.
Okay. All right, and then evaluate city council accessibility and compensation options?
What was, can Jesse, what's the accessibility? Hang on.
I think the context for the accessibility was accessibility to serve and run for city council. So I think the accessibility was related more to the compensation as opposed to like ADA accessibility.
Okay, are there any questions about this goal? Or objective, sorry, it's an objective. Any questions? Is there consensus to add this? Yeah, I'm seeing consensus, yes.
Okay. All right, and then the next one is around evaluating staff capacity and administration and parks maintenance. And so this came from a discussion around, you know, potentially exploring a 32-hour work week, which felt pretty specific, you know?
That was two different discussions. That was two different, actually, that's two different.
Okay.
This came in the discussion that we have administrative staff that are, one person is doing two full-time positions. And within the parks maintenance, we have new parks, new acres, and we haven't hired any parks maintenance. So this was actually the exact opposite of reducing staff hours. This was the goal, because I brought it up, I'm just not trying to be rude, but the goal is to increase staffing to, because we have increased service needs.
All right, any questions about, any questions about these, this one or for clarity for staff?
Any questions? Is there a consensus for this one to stay?
Is there a consensus for this one to stay? Yeah, yeah, yep. Yeah, we have consensus for this one.
Okay, is there, all right, is there consensus for the, uh, create a parking management plan?
Uh, like shared, like, so we're hearing from downtown, like, some business owners and some community members that there's not enough parking in downtown. And so I would like to explore like shared lot agreements, like really have a very in-depth, like, talk about, like, basically, get our traffic review board, like, what can we really do, um, to try to mitigate some of these parking issues, like maybe a permit? Lots, that city behind Van Dyke, like, behind, right? Should that be permit for business owners? Like, a parking management plan just kind of encompasses all those options of really like figuring out how we can better meet the parking demands that we have in our downtown core. Is what I was thinking with that. Is there questions?
Um, I would recommend making this more of a partnership with the city club because that's on our, um, our roadmap as well. So, I mean, we've already got one, two, three, four that we're adding, hopefully five. So if we can take this either off of, off of it and make it something that Miles and the city club is working on together to bring back to council, that's great. If you feel like we need to leave it on here so that we have it on our goals also, that's great. Just a, a comment.
Yeah, I appreciate that because I think too, that's, you know, hopefully there's partnerships with Pacific, with a few agencies. But I also like hesitant to like takes, like, there is a responsibility from the city. I think it's important to leave it as a goal for this, or an objective for the city. So we can say, hey, we're working on this with our partners. Or, you know, I don't know how you guys feel about that.
Are there, are there comments on council?
Yeah.
For the parking management plan?
Just to maybe kind of agree to your point, I think, you know, because of what I could see coming out of a parking management plan and a strategy for shared parking would be a lot of wayfinding, um, and information and improvements in the right of way. And so I think you would have to have city partnership and you'd, you'd, you'd have to have a little bit more of policy discussion around that as opposed to just a facilitation by a separate nonprofit organization.
Yeah, there's also connections too, um, with the parking management plan, with the, um, um, with your economic development strategic plan and other, like, code updates. So recommended that it's.
Sorry, Ashley, this would be something, um, when we talked about that responsibility with the city and the city club and how we need to kind of, um, unpack that, the, these are all things that, that Main Street programs own and then work with the city on policy. So wayfinding is also, um, in that, in that roadmap. So although I, I agree, we can absolutely keep it on here to keep it in our purview and have it as a, um, a goal and objective. It's, it's just that this would be definitely a partnership that was, that was managed on, um, the Main Street program side.
Uh, the only thing I would mention is we, we did a parking management study three years ago, um, I think. And so actually this would be kind of, and they did make some recommendations in that study from a demand management perspective. So this would actually kind of, we have a reference point for this in terms of putting together a potential plan. One of them was wayfinding. I don't remember some of the other ones, but, so we do have a reference point. That's all.
All right. The, so for the purposes of adding it to the council goals and objectives, is there consensus to, to leave it, to leave it as is?
I, I've.
I'm not, I'm not hearing consensus to change it.
I'm, I'm seeing consensus to leave it as is.
Okay. All right. And then, uh, this one on the conducted efficiency study, I believe that's the one that came out of the discussion for the thirty-two hour work week, which felt, um, too specific. And so if the goal, and also trying to keep in mind that goals, and when you're setting goals, thinking about what's the outcome that you're trying to see and thinking about, um, setting the what, and then staff is implementing the how. So, um, by shifting this language to conducting an efficiency study, it's focusing on, um, that discussion that the council had earlier in the retreat around efficiency with efficacy. And so it allows, um, the, the ability to, you know, look at best practices, see where there's opportunities for improvements within the city, and then develop different options that then staff could come to council later, uh, for further discussion and analysis. So it just provides a little more flexibility and.
Yeah, Counselor Schimmel.
Opportunities for discussion.
I definitely support the, the objective. I would emphasize, because the, what I would want staff to evaluate foremost is, is, is the current time achieving the objective or the, of the effectiveness of initiative or the work versus being limited to what they can.
No, I'm not following you. Sorry.
Well, well, we're, we're inheriting things that were, that were adopted, approved, implemented before. And for example, with the parks, you know, when they say they need nine people to take care of parks, there's only five. And then there's, there's an effectiveness problem that we need to solve first before we ask park maintenance folks to get more efficient about doing their main. So that could be true for any number, like, planning, public work.
I, I guess what I was wondering on, on this particular one is what would be the purpose of the, of the efficiency study? Like, where's it, where's it going? What's the desired outcome of an efficiency study? In some departments, you can find pretty commonly accepted metrics for effectiveness and/or efficiency. Um, and, and other ones, it's very difficult to kind of find some type of potential measurement. Um, and so I guess I'm just kind of, I wanted to get a little bit more clarity, I think, from the council about what's the scope of this study? What does it look like? Is it, is it all departments? Is it one department? Is it, as we've? That's what I'm just kind of curious about. Um, and, and what would be the kind of ultimate potential outcome? Is it a, is it number of staff? Is it, um, how we're doing business? Is it? Anyways, those are just some of the questions I was curious about. Just a little more.
So I, I brought this one up, um, a couple of years ago and then this year. So with, with the amount that, that our residents are paying in taxes versus the amount that we're able to get done, it feels to me, by looking at other cities, um, that, that we're not able to get as much done with the resources that we have. Resources meaning finances and human resources. So when you do efficiency studies, you're looking at both tangible and intangible. So you're looking at, um, your people resources and your financial resources. Um, I always come back to, because it's one of them that just glaring, um, the street sweeping that you and I've talked about before. There, there isn't a schedule adhered to. Um, the, the street sweeper just goes out when they feel like it. And then i- if the garbage cans are out, they, they drive away because there's garbage cans out. There's not, not a schedule there. So I am going to assume that that is the same or similar in many departments. And so all businesses go through times where they have their own efficiency study. It doesn't necessarily mean you need to have a consultant. Um, I think the best thing to do is start internally and, and put goals and say, you know, let's, let's cut back ten percent. Let's, how do we, how do we cut back on time ten percent? Show me, um, the time efficiency that you saved by changing your processes or becoming, um, more accurate with your processes. Because we are not getting any more money and it is going to get worse with this new administration. We have got to think about this. Those are just my ideas.
Are there other, yeah, yeah, right.
Just clarifying.
Yeah, get closer to the mic.
Yep.
Yeah.
Well, uh, an important context for me on the efficacy side was looking at the next levy. So can you remind me when we go to the ballot again for the next operating levy?
Please have it go to the ballot.
Yeah, so that was an important context for me. So I, I apologize if, if it was poorly connected to, to Counselor Gustafson's. But it was about preparing and educating the public on what, what we need to operate the city. So that, that would be a two-year exercise.
So I think one of the clarifications that I was maybe looking for is we're, we're a, a full-service city, and so we offer actually more services than any municipality in Washington County. Um, and, and, and I know during the budget process, if staff is ever looking at potentially trying to add staff in any certain department, whether it be Parks and Rec, whether it be Public Works, whether it be Library, we do do efficiency studies zeroed in on that staff. Last year, remember, we did IT and we did something for finance. We compared it to four cities of our size. We looked at their staff. We were far under where their, their staff was. And so we added some staff in those areas. We looked at number of users. So I, I guess the only, I'm not suggesting that we shouldn't do an efficiency, efficiency study or, or an effectiveness study. I am suggesting that when we go to add staff, we do do that study. It's a, it's focused on that particular service and that particular area. Um, and so that's the only reason I was trying to kind of clarify the scope, because it's, if it's for the entirety of the city, then it's what services are we offering? Because there's multiple services in each of those. And so if we, if, you know, Counselor Gustafson, to your point, if we want to look at street sweeping and an efficiency study for that, we can do that. Um, and we can zero in on that. If it's something else, we can kind of zero in on that. If it's comprehensive to the city, that's just a different scope of a study. That's a much bigger kind of undertaking than strategically looking at certain sections. Does that make sense, Counselor? So.
I would think that it would be more efficient to do it by the different departments. It's because all the obligations and tasks that they need to do are different, you know? So I would think, you know, if you do the whole thing, I, I think it needs to be department.
I guess my question is whether this is a, I mean, we're taught, these are mostly city council goals that then are sort of have something to do with a policy question. And I'm not sure that this one is a city council goal. Um, and like, maybe Jesse, to hear your thoughts on that. What, like, what would we be? What would, where would the interaction with city council be on this goal? I'm not sure. It's not clear to me that this is a city council goal.
Musical microphone. It's on my list. Microphone, uh, staff meeting. No. I was going to make a joke about an efficiency study, but I won't about microphones. So I, I think our, our commitment to the council, um, is during the budget process, if we ever look at adding resources or conversely, if we have a downturn in resources. So if there is a service that we are doing that we are no longer providing, we look at what those metrics are and what those efficiencies are as best that we can. We report that to the budget committee. And so I don't know if that answers your question, Counselor Falconer, but I'm, that's why I was kind of asking earlier, kind of, where's this going? What's that policy nexus with the council that wouldn't otherwise be at the budget committee, if that makes sense? So that would be specific to, to city council. So.
Are there additional, I'm sorry, I'm trying to figure out where the mic is going. Are there additional comments on this one? Do we feel like we need?
We have, someone was talking, right? It's okay. Sorry, Ashley.
That's all right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, I mean, again, the, the context for me was looking out at the next levies, or if the budget cycles take care of that, then we're okay. I'm okay.
Okay, so let's finish up with this one and then we'll probably just schedule, because we're running up against a time. Uh, so we'll schedule a second work session to refine the rest of them. But so with this last one is, what's the consensus of the council? Um, I'm hearing some people say drop it. Some people say, I have three drops. Undecided. Undecided from Counselor Marshall.
Okay, so I, I, I can't, you're, it's, nobody's convinced me to let go of this yet. Um, good try, Jesse. Um, but I, I mean, there, there's a lot of things and, and, um, to, to your comment, um, I, I get that, you know, where it's not, it's not a policy we're talking about unless we're going to make a policy to always do this. Um, and, and we have things on our goals and objectives that aren't policies. Um, so that's, that's actually something to think about that I, I didn't realize. But if, if we can have some sort of agreement that we are doing, uh, efficiency studies by department, and if, if one of us sees a problem, do we need to bring it to the council so that we all agree to say, hey, Jesse, um, we would like you to do this? Or can one of us go to Jesse and say, I need to work with you on a street sweeping process because it's driving Counselor Gustafson bonkers?
So what, what if we do this? Um, it's not necessarily a study, but it's, it's close. What if during the budget process this year, we put in what are some of our commonly accepted metrics in each of our departments? And then it's transparent, it's informative, and each of you have it. We've done this for the most part. This is already kind of there. So we're not inventing something new. Uh, we've done it for Public Works, we've done it for Fire, for Police, for Library. We've done it for all of our departments. It would just be a more, um, organized way of reporting now to the council. And if the council has concerns about it in the budget process, we can talk about it then. Is that okay?
I did want to answer Counselor Gustafson's question too. I think if, at any point for council rules, if, even if something's not on our goals and objective, a council can bring it to council, have a motion, get consensus, and then add it, right? Like, these are, this is the way it goes. So, you know, I think too, like, sometimes when we go through objectives, we're like, oh, what if this thing comes up? But there are systems in place to, to refine the direction of the council. Um, okay, so I'm hearing that there's consent. Well, I got over to this side. So I had three on this side for dropping it. And then, Counselor Marshall?
Sorry, if we're getting the information like we're saying before the, before we go through budget, I'm okay with taking it off as long as we have the information prior to the budget. That's my goal is to have that information so we can make a, a decision.
Okay.
I, I think it is our responsibility to make sure that our city is running efficiently and effectively with the funds that we have. So.
Okay, so there's consensus to remove it, um, from the goals and objectives. And then staff will bring it, put, part it in, put it, uh, give information before the budget process.
Mm-hmm.
And then is it okay? And then I'm going to adjourn this work session, uh, for right now. And is that okay with you, Ashley? I'm sorry we did not get all the way through it.
Yes, not a problem. No, we can reschedule the, another work session to cover the rest of them.
Okay, thank you, Ashley, so much. Sorry for, you know, making you come back another time, but it is what it is.
No, that's no problem. No, it's good to have the discussion. It's good to have consensus. And so there's clarity. That's the whole, that's the whole point of these things. So we can adjust and I just want to make sure everyone feels good about the level of discussion and having clarity. So, no, no problem with that.
Thank you so much. Okay, I'm going to adjourn.
Thank you.
I'm going to adjourn this work session of the force group city council on goals and objectives. And I'm going to invite Brian Poole, and I don't know if Miles Blau. And a few audience members. So I'm gonna, okay, you guys have your, it'd be easier if you. You guys have your, it'd be easier if you both, are you going to talk? Are you both talking? I would say if you both talk, you should just sit by each other. Whoever is talking should.
Quick opening remark. So about a year ago, we implemented two new programs the council approved for tourism. It was the sponsorship program and the capital R program. Also, excuse me, there was the art program. This is just an opportunity to review the programs, what we've done, and take comments from council about how to update them, amend them. We're going in the right direction if we're not. That's all.
We have a PowerPoint here. Mariah, are you looking at the PowerPoint? All right, well, thank you all. As Jesse mentioned, this is a chance to just talk about TLT and sort of what it's doing and where it's going. Just kind of doing a review. Next slide, please. To discuss all the programs that are funded by the TLT. And then, as Jesse said, these programs were created about a year ago. And just want to see if council wants to maintain them or if we want to make changes to them. A way of background, it's a busy slide. I'm not going to read all of it for you. But the, in 2016, the county amended the ordinance that enabled the TLT to allow local municipalities to keep 100% of what they collect. And in 2017, the council approved ordinance 2017-13 to establish a 2.5% transient lodging tax. Started to collect that in 2018. Fast forward to 2023, and council passed resolution 2023-2, establishing three new tourism programs, as Jesse mentioned, the Tourism Event Sponsorship Program, the Capital Grant Program, and the Art Program. And then in 2024, council held a work session in April to refine these programs. Slide, please. Just for your information, this is what we are charging right now. Other cities, we are the lowest in Washington County. I guess tied for the lowest, at 2.5%. That's on top of the Washington County's 9% that's being charged for TLT. Every 2.5% equates to about $25,000. It's not obviously on the note, that's approximate. You can see our collections over the years dating back to 2020. It has grown, peaking in 2022, 2023, and then sort of coming back a little bit back to earth in 2023, 24, and 24, 25. Next slide, please. As you know, a municipality can impose a tax on transient lodging at any rate. There's no, surprised to learn that. There's no limit on what a municipality can charge. Under state law, 30% of that TLT revenue can be used for the general fund or whatever you'd like to. And 70% has to go back into tourism marketing efforts or capital tourism efforts. Our TLT expenditures right now are broken out in this lovely pie chart that Miles put together. You'll see 40% goes to marketing, 40% to the sponsorships, 10% to our capital program, 10% to our art program. Slide, please. Just to remind you also that we contracted with J-Ray Marketing, and then also the Chamber of Commerce, who manages the Discover Forest Grove website. That contract would expire on June 30th of this year. Last year, it received, or the website received 14,485 views. It has 1,254 Instagram followers, and we've had an increase of profile visits of 85%. Obviously, the purpose of the program is, the Tourism Sponsorship Program is to provide financial assistance to different events within the city. These are some of the examples that the Tourism Sponsorship Program has funded. Next slide, please. As you can see, it's up to $5,000 per event. These are the criteria you see right here. But it is a healthy program. It has been taken advantage of quite a bit and enabled a lot of community events to take place. The criteria then that are up there, I'll just point out a couple to you that a portion of the attendees will be expected to travel from outside Forest Grove. That would result in overnight hotel stays. We have to receive your application 90 days before the event. And the city's maximum sponsorship is $2,500. Is that right?
It's, no, it's $5,000.
Five thousand, or the platinum-level sponsorship. Where the highest sponsorship level is, we will provide. If there are not sponsorship levels, we will provide up to $2,500. Next slide. We also run the Capital Grants Program. That's up to $2,500 in reimbursable expenses for the purchase of capital expenses related to tourism. These are only available for nonprofits, which is important to note. And that's $2,500 per organization annually. The total, they could have several different applications be funded, up to $2,500. Again, that's funded at 10% of the annual TLT revenues. Four grants were awarded. The Art Program is dedicated funding directly to the Forest Grove Arts Commission to increase the city's supply of public art. It has to be used for installation art or murals. That's also 10% of the annual TLT. Let's get to our discussion slide, the point where I stop talking. But I guess, are there questions? There any channels you guys want to make to the TLT program? And are there any areas the council wants staff to focus on this year?
So I had a couple, I had a couple, one suggestion, and probably needs to be like worked out with the council, and then a question for council. So can we go back to the sponsorship slide? So when it says event organizers must produce marketing materials, and those materials must include the city. I think it's also important that at the event, it shows that the city sponsored it. So like, I want to like clean that up a little bit, because that's pretty vague. Like, you could put a Facebook ad that says the city, and then that's it. And it would still meet that criteria. But when people come, like, I'm going to give you a little history, too. Like, two years, because this is something that I've been, you know, I'm really proud of. And I think I was always looking for a way for the city to support our events downtown and our events within the community. And I remember going to the corn roast, and the school district sponsored it. The city of Cornelius sponsored it in our downtown, and I was like heartbroken. But so I think it's really, really important that these events that are downtown stay sponsored by the city of Forest Grove. And so I would like to see that added. And I don't know if we say like all marketing material must have our sponsorship on it, or there must be sponsorship at the event and on any additional marketing we do. But I think that really is important. So I don't know if there's consensus. I'm seeing consensus from.
So when you say all marketing, that means everybody would have to have custom banners made?
Yeah, what I said was either we require it at the event, or we say all marketing. Like, I was giving, like, just opening up some ideas for discussion. But I just think, I think at the event, it should say that we sponsored the event. Like, that's my, like, number one criteria.
I was going to say, is there any way for the city to actually get a banner that just says sponsored by the city of Forest Grove? And we bring it to them, and that's what they put up? I mean, it's just, and it's no different than any other sponsorship. Get any grant where they require to put their banner. Sorry.
Is there any other discussion on that? So what is the direction moving?
Starts to showing that we are sponsoring the event. But add to it that if we do get a banner, that a banner will be provided that you have to put up at your event.
We're going to have to say that all over again. Sorry, Mariah.
I'm agreeing with the mayor and just with more clarity, saying that anything digital or print could have our logo. Banners or other things, we could have a sandwich board sign or.
Even in the social media announcements, you can have that added to it.
And I think that, you know, however we want to do it is fine. But just making sure it's required that sponsorship is at the actual event. And then the question I had is, is there any, I mean, I'm interested in increasing our TLT? And is there any, is anyone else interested in that? We're the lowest in Washington County. Yeah, go back to that slide, please. But so I just wanted, I mean, kind of looking at this as a revenue. And it is right now a really well-built program that supports tourism. It supports our local businesses. Like, this is, I think, valuable. So I would be interested in maybe just increasing it to 3%. So we're the same with our neighbor Hillsborough. And, you know, we're still lower than Beaverton, but I don't know how other people feel. I'm seeing consensus for the 3%, but Counselor Schimmel? Are there other, I don't want to monopolize this discussion. Are there other questions or?
Can you go back to the pie? Okay, there it is. So all of this is split. Is this, is this how we budgeted it? With marketing at 40%, sponsorships at 40%, or is that just how it worked out? Okay, can we talk about adding the city club to the TLT expenditures? If this is going to be a separate conversation for the budget? Or will this be a conversation for the budget season? Yeah, so are we going to talk about TLT rates again? And how we're distributing it now or during budget cycle?
I think it's up to the, I think, the question I think is, is if you add half a percent to the TLT, it's going to raise approximately $25,000 to $30,000, depending on how many bedstays that we have in the community. I think the question that may stem from that is where would the extra funds go? You can apportion it like you have here, generally speaking. I will say on the marketing one, that one is a little bit more than normally would because we did a campaign this year. Our bedstays were down, and so we did a marketing campaign. We hired the consultant that was on the one slide. So these percentages are not locked in. They will vary. What is known is that if you do do an increase in the TLT, you will have some additional revenue. And so at some point, whether it's tonight or probably during the budget process, there will be a policy discussion about how you want to spend those monies.
That's the question. Do we discuss that tonight or during budget? Doesn't matter to me which one.
So I think tonight was just to get some comments on the TLT programs themselves. You know, how they're being, how the programs went, if you want to make any tweaks to the programs, et cetera. If there's a conversation about a TLT and how you may want to spend that money, I don't know. I think you could either look at it potentially tonight, although time I know is limited, or certainly in the budget process, I think there would be a conversation about that. Counselor Gustafson?
Is it okay that we do later towards budget season? Okay, and then, hang on, do not talk. Okay, here you go.
I was going to ask Counselor Gustafson if it makes sense to tie that also in with our goal and objective on the downtown redevelopment partnership. It sounds like there's a policy question about city club. And then there's, and then that sells into the budget. Right? Does that make sense?
I don't know that we're going to get to all those conversations at the same time because that conversation of what that partnership looks like and who's doing what and all of that, it might take some time to shake that out and not just all be decided at one meeting. So we can't miss the budget cycle. So the city club will be asking, and I will be doing that in their place, for a certain percentage of TLT rates and URA rates and general fund rates. That that will be a negotiation that's starting. But that will be separate than the partnership. That partnership will happen. But it'll be a conversation that Miles and Brian and the city club are having to determine who's doing what, because that will play to a certain amount into the budget. And if it's not this year, it'll be future years. It's a growth process.
I can't buy into that, that we put budget before policy. I think we absolutely need to establish a policy on who we're going to allocate money for and how and when. I think, I think would be a poor process for you in your city club where to partner with staff on something that goes into budget process. That totally goes around the council's jurisdiction on it. So I'm just saying, I can't support that myself. I support the city club's work. I think it has value, just like a lot of other nonprofits that generate their income without city dollars. But because it ties in with an objective, let's address the objective first, that we agree that the city club is vital to the money that we're generating. So I want to make sure clear that I support the club. It's the policy piece.
So I understand what you're saying. This is a progressive program. And we have already been in this program for almost a year now. And by now, many cities have already started assisting their Main Street program with finances. And the city club has yet to receive any support from the city, from any of the extra grants that the city brings forth for nonprofits. Other nonprofits have received that. For instance, Centro receives a free building, and the city club does not. Other nonprofits do not. And that is a huge amount of money. Our downtown is dying. And if we don't do something very soon, it's going to get worse very quickly. This is going to be an ask during budget season. And I don't know that we're going to be able to have a plan all figured out before that because it's a lot. It's not a snap decision. It's a process. But I understand that, you know, buying into it is difficult.
Maybe at this point, we're getting to the elephant in the room. I would caution the counselor with stating my day jobs, the organization I work for as part of your argument. That has nothing to do with who I work for. I think that was planted. The previous council established the policy it has with the senior center. I regret for your case that they did not establish a policy for the city club. That's now for us to do. That's what I want to do. I absolutely do not support allocating money or you working directly with staff on a policy question that we need to address. But please, please leave Centro out of this. The senior center is a separate policy that the previous council established. If we want to address that separately, let's do that. Please don't mention the name in the context of something completely different.
My point is that not all nonprofits get the same benefit that others receive. We need this in order to move forward with our downtown program. If we're going to be restricted to wait until we have all of the arrangements made with the city, that's going to take another year. And it's another year that most people don't think that we have. So moving forward, that's going to be the big question. As far as working with Miles and Brian, this is a conversation that will be had. That's part of that partnership. That is expected. And that will move forward, just like every other city moves forward with their Main Street program.
Okay, I'm going to, I think, you know, I'm going to bring it back to the TLT dollars. I think that there's definitely more work sessions than, like, because there hasn't been direction from the council with Main Street, other than the letter of support. been direction from the council with Main Street other than the letter of support. So I definitely think that we can resume this specific topic at a later work session. My question to staff is, you know, Miles, you're in the thick of it. Is there any feedback from people who have applied for any of the programs? Any feedback from them saying like, hey, this is a little, like, this could be tweaked a little bit? Or is there anything that you're hearing from our community about how we need to alter this, these things?
I think it's just really appreciated so far by the community and the community events. We can definitely tighten it up a little bit, and I think that was the expectation going into it, is that the logo would appear everywhere and just making that clear and following up on that.
Are there additional questions or concerns? I hear tons of positive things about it, too. Everyone loves it. It's real exciting. Thank you for doing such a good job with it. Okay, so I'm going to adjourn this work session on transit lodging tax revenue. Thank you, gentlemen.
Mayor, counsel.
Oh, sorry, let me call this.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, chief.
You called us up.
No, I got distracted. I'm going to call to order this work session, the police building ballot title review. And presenting is our Chief of Police, Mr. Henry Reiman. And assisting him is our Assistant City Manager and Finance Director. I'll now turn it over to you. Thank you, chief.
Paul is really in charge. He is the Finance Director. But our purpose tonight is hopefully to get council's consensus on ballot language. I'm not asking council this evening to edit or making any substantive type of changes to the ballot language. The PowerPoint presentation that we are presenting this evening has changed from what you received in your packet. This afternoon, we received revised language from the council, a bond council. The changes that the bond council recommended were not significant. However, since staff will use the changes in the ballot language, staff, staff felt that we needed to present the new language to council. Staff apologizes for the late changes. Next slide. So a quick review on September 9th, 2024, at the council work session, council reached consensus to place the police facility on the May 20, 2025 ballot. On January 13th, council, work session council reached consensus to place a $29.5 million general obligation bond on the May 2025 ballot. Next slide. Begin our timelines. Hopefully, if consensus is reached this evening, we will present the resolution approving ballot language on February 10th. On February 28th is the last date to file with the city recorder, and at that point, we'll begin the 10-day challenge on March 20th. Last date of file ballot will be the last date of file ballot language with the county elections office. The 10-day challenge must have been completed at that point. On March 24th, it will be the last date of file argument in the Boulder camp. And on May 20th, we will have our election. So we'll quickly, just to review, this is the ballot form that staff will need to fill out, and you'll see it's kind of small, but each section has a certain amount of words that we have to provide. We cannot go beyond the words that are allocated for either the title, which is called the caption, the question summary, and the explanatory statement. Next slide.
This is the, this really didn't change too much from the, from the bond council's review, but general obligation bonds to replace 48-year-old police facility. That's nine words, and that's the, that's the title, the caption that they're going to want to go with. Next slide. Question was 20 words. The, you can read the question there. So Forest Grove issued general obligation bonds not to exceed $29.5 million in principal amount for a new police facility. Why it says not to exceed is depending on how interest rates go or other things go between now and when we go to issue the bonds. We don't need to issue 25, $29.5 million in bonds. We will not issue $29.5 million in bonds to get proceeds that we need, or we might decide to go ahead and issue them anyway and get some additional proceeds. The bottom section in black, that's boilerplate that's required by state law, doesn't count towards the limit. What this basically says is the bonds are exempt from measure five. They're down, they're down to the bond section. They're not up in the general government, so they're, they're not subject to the measure five limitation. So when we tell them we want this much money, they will tax, however, at whatever rate they need to get that money next year, so.
Can I, Mayor, if I may?
Yeah, go ahead.
Paul, if you would, maybe after each slide, see if there's just a general consensus or any concerns from the council about the language that's being used?
Let's go back to the title. Is there general consensus for the title? A thumbs up or a nod? I'm seeing consensus.
48 years is old enough. I mean, it doesn't, 48, but it doesn't seem very old to me. Yeah, I just wasn't sure that 48 years old sounded old enough, but I know it's really not even just that, it's the size.
Yes, the size. And that's more the explanatory statement and some of the summaries and that will go into provide more information. They won't let us use words like decrepit in there for some strange reason, so.
Yeah, I think there's consensus with the title.
Question.
And then is the question, is there consensus or any questions about the question?
Suppose going back to the title, maybe, I mean, to, I mean, to your point, if, if that doesn't, you know, if that doesn't sound old enough, I mean, you might consider asking council to change this to current police facility. I mean, if you're not allowed to say inadequate, well, you might not be allowed to say inadequate, but current is not a, is not a value qualifying word.
So, if I may?
Go ahead, Jesse.
There was, there was kind of a couple of options that were, because, because this is actually one of the, probably one of the most important ones of the work session is the, is the title. And we were thinking, oh, we're missing a word. We still got one word we can use, because we got 10 and we're only using nine. So there's a couple of different ways. 48-year-old was one of the ones that we looked at. 1977 is another one, constructed in 1977. I don't know how that may resonate with the council. The third option could be, as Counsel Falconer was suggested, is you're not date-specific either with 48 or 1977. You just say the current police facility, and then you can explain it later. So we were trying to find something that would resonate and capture right off the bat, but if this doesn't resonate, then we can certainly change it.
I see people and hearing people say they like changing it to replace the current police facility. Is that, are we in agreement or? Go ahead, Jesse.
Sorry.
Why were you done talking last time?
When we get to the explanatory statement and to a certain extent, the summary, what you'll see is a number of comments. Most of the comments stem from the poll that was done in 2018, where we actually messaged certain key messages with certain key words. And so we use those messages and we use that wording in order that it would resonate and in the level of confidence in which it was given. So it's very intentional when you get to the next one. The 48-year-old was one of the questions. It didn't necessarily resonate, but it wasn't a negative either. So it wasn't really a positive, but it wasn't really a negative. It was kind of right in the middle. There just wasn't any other messages that we could use where we could fit it within 10 words.
Well, I think that Counsel Falconer brings up a good point because how long's the bond? How, how many years are they going to be paying on this?
21, 2021.
So I mean, just as a taxpayer, like, there'd be a little bit like, hey, it's only, it was only worth 20, I mean, there's like value-based decisions, right? So I, I'm in agreement to change it to current.
Okay. I can do that.
I think there's consensus to do that. Okay, how about the question?
This one was pretty much prescribed by general bond council. It has to meet a certain criteria with the state, and so this one's pretty well scripted.
Okay, so we can't really change it. Okay, so let's move on.
Next one, summary is where you've got more, where you've got more of what you can do. Do with explaining it, so. I'll let you read that page. I don't want to read it all.
Can we switch slides? I don't know if everyone's done. I'm asking if the council's ready to switch.
Next slide. All right.
Thank you.
So as you go through the slide, I think as Jesse mentioned, the bulleted points are statements placed in order based on the polling that we took over the last several years.
Okay, is there another slide for the summary?
No, because the 174 is where it stops.
How do we feel about the summary? Have one thumbs up, one had none.
Olivia, Olivia, it's 20 years, but you always say 21 because sometimes when you issue them, when you're going to issue it and when the payments start, sometimes you go like 20 and a half years. So you always want to say 21, just to allow yourself that.
Grace.
The leeway and how, and how the financing and when the payments start. So you always say 21 years in here. And, you know, site improvements, demolitions, or furnishings don't sound exciting, but you've also, also talking about kind of what you're going to do with the money. So you've got to.
Yeah.
Got to put some of those things in. And so as, as with everything, we'll probably, I would say the caption and the question, we probably won't do much on, but we're always, we're always looking at tweaking these things slightly up until the last minute. So you may see some tweaks in the, like, the summary or the explanatory statement over the next, between now and that, but they'd be marginal at most.
This will come back to council.
Yeah, let's get back to council on the February 10th. If there's consensus to bring it forward.
Yeah, is there consensus to bring this forward? Change the battle, the ballot title, right? And then?
And the last part's the 500 measure explanatory statement. And this is where you've got, this is, this is where you just put everything into it that you can think you need to put into it and talk about stuff in the order you do, what it does, what benefits you're going to provide, why, why, you know, why are we telling the public we need to replace this facility? And we have 500 words, and right now we're at 492. So it's all, you know, you probably don't have time to read through it tonight, but if you want to read, Jesse's got something.
Go ahead, Jesse.
So the second paragraph where that came from is one of the main themes. It actually wasn't polled, but one of the comments that was made by the person that did the poll was one of the main reasons that police facilities fail is because there's an understanding amongst the public or a perception amongst the public that they work out of their vehicles, and therefore you don't need a building. And so I think we tried to, even though this wasn't polled, it was one of the prevailing themes from the poll was why do they need a police facility? They work out of their vehicles. We wanted to provide some type of language that explained why police officers need a building, and so that's where that came from. So thanks, Mayor.
Yeah, going on along that same line, I was wondering, is it important to somehow draw, make a distinction between creating space for interviewing victims and children? Like distinct spaces to do this, distinct spaces to do that? Because one of the things about our current PlayStation is it's all done in the same space. Okay. Okay, got it. Thank you. Yeah, okay. Any other questions for staff? No, I'm just like wondering on this, this slide, but yeah. Okay, we can move on, Mariah. If you see anything that you have questions, just wave your hand and I'll pass the mic.
Just a minor, maybe just to be consistent with using or not using an Oxford comma would be a suggestion, that's all.
Where is that at, Counsel Falconer? Sorry.
I don't know if we have a standard that we typically use, but for, I mean, I think if we want to sometimes use a Oxford comma, then we should always use an Oxford comma. I'm just noticing that the second bullet dedicated private doesn't have one. And before, I think I saw one, so I would just be consistent so that the language is always clear in the same, in the same way.
Okay, we'll review it for that. We do have eight words, so we can use another word there if we'd like.
Okay, next slide, please, Mariah. All right, I'm going to let everybody know how very well-read I am. I can't even pronounce that word. So I, and y'all know what word I'm talking about. Yes, thank you.
We're just talking about that word.
Yeah, I'm thinking we need to modify the word. Plain language, please.
I said that, yeah, we need, we need to simplify that word.
Yeah, I agree.
We can do that.
You have a question? Okay, is there another slide? Are we?
Nope. Where you see the red word.
I just didn't know if you guys had anything else to present. Okay, any additional comments for staff? Is there consensus to bring this back to council on February 10th? I'm seeing consensus. Okay, thank you. I'm going to adjourn this work session, and then we will reconvene for our council meeting. I'm going to give us like a little bit of a break, a bio break before we start.